Would you please stand for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 29th.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Okay, next, we have a resolution proclamation and recognizing the month of September as National Recovery Month. It has come to the attention of the Medina County Board of Commissioners that National Recovery Month is a national observance held every September to educate Americans that substance, abuse treatment, and mental health services can enable those with mental and substance use disorders to live healthy and rewarding lives. Now, in its 34th year, Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those living in recovery. National Recovery Month is dedicated to increasing awareness of substance use disorders and honoring the people in our lives who are thriving in recovery. Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those in recovery, just as we celebrate health improvements made by those who are managing other health conditions such as hypertension, diabetes, asthma, and heart disease. The observance reinforces the positive message that behavioral health is essential to overall health. Prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover. The Hope Recovery Community located in Medina is dedicated to increasing sustained recovery by providing hope, support, advocacy, and resources to those impacted by addiction. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, that the month of September is declared as National Recovery Month.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Would you guys like to come up?
On behalf of Hope Recovery Community, Kathy Souse and the larger recovery community, we'd like to thank the commissioners for their continued support and recognition of recovery efforts as well as the Medina County Anna Board. Thank you.
Would you like to say a thing, Phil?
Sure.
Take advantage.
No, just once again, on behalf of the Medina County Anna Board, we thank you for your support, for the good work that Hope Recovery Community is doing, as well as Kathy's house. We've seen numbers go down this year in terms of, or in 2022, for overdoses. We know one overdose is too many, but we're heading in the right direction. A lot of that is because of the infrastructure that's been built, the diversification, all the resources that are there. We've come a long way, I think, in the last five years, but we have a lot more to go. So I think with continued support, we're going to get there. So, thank you again.
Thank you so much.
If I could also make a comment, and it's, you can step down, you don't have to stick around, but I just want to say too how important is not only the recognition of National Recovery Month, but also we have a levy on the ballot in November, our Human Services Levy, that helps provide the financial resources necessary to continue the support, the advocacy, as well as those additional resources. And so much great work being done by nonprofits and about government agencies, as well as the faith community in making sure that we appropriately address the issues surrounding recovery, but also the families that are impacted by this. And it's very important that we're asking people to support in November, this is a renewal, and, but this is an essential component of that, I'll just say, our county approach, comprehensive approach to dealing with this issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have our resolutions. First up, we have Annie Conrath, our county engineer.
Good morning. I have two resolutions for your consideration. The first, approving the final change order for a contract replace a bridge on Lester Road and Spieth Road. And the second is a resolution finding the public convenience and welfare requires to replace them a bridge on March Road.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And your weekly permit list is there.
Great. Next up, we have Jeremy Sinkar, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
I have two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into an emergency contract with Collins Excavation and Construction per Ohio Revised Code 307.86 to repair a broken sanitary force main along Medina Road. That is at our, located at our middle pump station in the 1500 block of Medina Road. It's about a 20 to 22-foot deep force main that needs to get repaired. The second is declaring the necessity to rehabilitate Gayer Elevated Water Storage Tank and authorizing the sanitary engineer to commence advertising for bids.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Shannon Reiner, Transit Director.
Morning. I have one resolution for you, approving the submission of applications for O.SY 2025 Transit Program Grants. We're looking at some, a joint procurement with other agencies in the area to purchase, possibly software.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Just have one other thing to mention.
We're excited to announce Monday, September 25th will be the first day of the Medina Flex. It's been some planning, it's been some preparation, but we feel it's ready, and we're going to see some great benefits from it with our partners in Medina City, Medina County overall, and some of the businesses. I was mentioning, I met with the Career Center, they're excited about it, which is in that zone. So we'll see, have more to report, and some positive results coming up.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chris Jacob, our county administrator.
That was weird, you're normally last, so it was like...
Yeah, not sure what happened there. That's fine. I have one resolution for your consideration this morning. This approves a purchase agreement and a quitclaim deed for sale of a parcel of property located at the Technology Park in Lafayette Township. The sales price is $216,000. It's for approximately 12 acres of land at the Technology Park. As you know, the board had previously approved an agreement with the Port Authority back in 2018 to allow for the Port Authority to market and sell the parcels located at Technology Park, and the proceeds of the sale are split evenly between the Port Authority and the county.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Holly Mirren, our human resources director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have one promotion at Job and Family Services, four rate increases, two at Office for Older Adults, one at Transit, one at Job and Family Services, one rate correction at Job and Family Services, two leave of absence at Sanitary, one suspension at County Home, and one resignation in Maintenance. Our second resolution is approving a three-year agreement between Medina County Sheriff and the Ohio Patrolmen's Menvalent Association, representing the Corrections Corporals and the Corrections Sergeants.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next up, we have Brett Thomas, our finance director.
Good morning, commissioners. I have eight resolutions for us today. The first one is amending our appropriations, increase of appropriations. The second resolution is transferring appropriations in between accounts. Our third resolution is expenditure adjustments. These are all for the sanitary engineer going through and making some changes over to specific funds. Our fourth resolution is an agreement for moving the fiscal agent services from the county commissioners over to ODJFS and the, sorry, brain dried there, the controller that ODJFS has appointed for Family First Council. Our fifth resolution is our excess property resolutions, couple items that will be going up for auction if anybody is interested. And our sixth resolution is expenses for the county engineer just going to a seminar. Seventh resolution is for other county officials with seminars and travel requests, nothing out of state. And our eighth resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,656,764.55, and as usual, copies of these bills are kept in the auditor's office for everyone's perusal.
Move to approve the eight resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Department reports. First up, we have Denise Testa, our Planning Services Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, I have a resolution for your consideration, accepting and awarding a bid for the CDBG-funded Monville Township Park Improvement Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So into the report, we currently are reviewing four subdivisions, two text amendments for this month. We also will review a major subdivision for our September Concept Plan Meeting. That subdivision is located in Sharon Township. For our October Planning Committee Commission Meeting, we have just one subdivision right now that we are anticipating, so we haven't heard of any further projects for that, those agendas. So the Critical Infrastructure Project in Lafayette Main Drive, it is D-U-N-done. So we're very excited about that. So we will wrap up with a dedication plat and making sure that that project has been finalized. We're continuing with the Lodi Critical Infrastructure Bridge Project in Community Park. The Army Corps of Engineer Permit will come in at the end of September, and we will advertise for bids at the end of October. We also recently awarded a, Wadsworth Sidewalk was awarded to DL Smith. I believe that was approved recently as well. So we are also in the process of working with the state to apply for the Ohio-led SAFE program. So this is a program that the state has allocated $95 million, and Medina County is eligible to apply for $802,000. So essentially, we're designing the plane as we fly it, as we learn on a daily and potentially hourly basis about the details of this project. You did approve a resolution for us to apply for that program, so as we move forward with learning more, we will continue to position the county the best we can and also work with our neighboring, our neighboring communities, including Brunswick, Medina, our villages, as well as Wadsworth, and all of our townships. But again, the application deadline has been extended to October 12th, which we're very excited about, because that gives us a little bit more time to think thoughtfully and strategically about this. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Laura Toth from Office for Older Adults.
Good morning.
I missed last month, I feel like I haven't been here in ages. So I have a few updates. First, I want to talk about the Wadsworth Suprema Cafe. It's going very well. Employment has been a little bit of a struggle, which puts our supervisor down there quite a bit, but the operation is flourishing. Last week, we started a regular catering obligation with the Wadsworth Rotary, who meet at the cafe every Thursday, so that was very exciting. We are accommodating 30 or more vouchers some days, with redeemed vouchers in July reaching 375, and that is more than we have ever done. We're usually around 300 or so, so, when we're at full operation, so this is really exciting. To that end, the Wadsworth Older Adult Foundation generously donated $6,000 to the voucher program to help out with the local end of funding for that and to keep people off the waiting list. It is the only program we have that does have a very small waiting list currently. There's about four people on that, but we strive to have no waiting lists, so we're looking at additional funding streams, but really exciting. It's going very well. The second thing I wanted to, any questions on that? Okay, the second thing I want to talk about is the Medina Kitchen Construction. I wanted to thank you, I wasn't here for the approval of the bid for our kitchen construction. We're set to begin next week. It's a very tight schedule. They want to get things done, and we want them to get things done. While under construction, our kitchen operations will be very limited in the Medina Center. Our staff emphasized to me the importance of delivering hot meals to seniors in the community, which we will not be able to do out of Medina. And for many meal recipients, the home-delivered meal is the only hot meal they have, so then I was on a quest, where can we cook hot meals during construction? I reached out to the Salvation Army Medina Corps, knowing that they have a centralized county location, and they have a food program in Project Munch. I met with the new captains, Kevin and Tracy Nappens, and toured their facility, which has the room and almost the capability to handle our hot home-delivered meal service. And then after speaking to the Medina County Senior and Adult Foundation, they were willing to purchase a full-size convection oven to be placed at the Salvation Army for use to prepare hot home-delivered meals. We had a large meeting with the Health Department and Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging, and we agreed this will work as a temporary location for the hot preparation of home-delivered meals. Office for Older Adults is obtaining a food license for the Salvation Army. They do not require one themselves, as they are a church organization. And we anticipate operating twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays, out of the Medina Salvation Army, delivering hot meals all over the county. And currently, our count is about 180 hot meals per run. After, after this is over, after our construction's over, the foundation is done, well, is now, I guess, donating the oven to the Salvation Army, which will continue to support the community and Project Munch for years to come. So it's really a super win-win. It has been, I call it a super collaboration to get all parties on board and put the puzzle pieces into place, and I'm so happy, we are so happy as an agency to continue to offer hot meals to our home-delivered recipients throughout the construction phase of our kitchen, twice per week. The other meals received during the week by our recipients will be box lunches and then one frozen meal. That's not a change. Recipients always were delivered one frozen meal per week. The Medina Center is making preparation for the construction and a setup of a temporary kitchen for the cold, already-prepped meals, because we're not going to be able to prep food at that site. It will be loud, it will be dusty, it will sometimes be smelly, I'm sure, but we remain committed to offering a daily lunch to seniors who come into the center, and we have alternative rooms set up when needed, either the conference room on the first floor of our building or our craft room. So we're trying to make all accommodations to serve everybody during this construction phase. So I really like meeting with the construction company, they're like, we're going to keep this schedule tight and get it done. I'm like, please, please, but so far, so good, although it hasn't started yet, so, at least in the planning phases. Finally, I wanted to talk about, we have partnered with Habitat for Humanity to begin an Aging in Place program. It actually started in July. This program is designed to allow Habitat for Humanity to complete small builds or repairs in a senior's home, which allow them to remain in the community. Office for Older Adults completes the intake form, which allows our staff to offer seniors in the community additional services, maybe people we haven't met before. Tom O'Connell, who is here, and I'll ask to come up, the director of Medina Habitat for Humanity, will say a few words in a minute. I want to express to the board that the response to this program has been very positive, and we are definitely keeping his staff busy. Medina's Habitat for Humanity is one of only a handful in the state of Ohio to offer this program, and we're proud to partner with Habitat for Humanity in this program. And Tom designed these signs that go into yards of the homes they're working on. It's really, really nice, but come on up, Tom, if you want to say a few words.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you, Laura, for the opportunity. I just want to first thank the commissioners for your support of Habitat's mission and work here in Medina County. Commissioner Hambley was at our 50th dedication in Brunswick just a few weeks ago. I want to thank Laura and Sean at the Office for Older Adults for the opportunity to partner on this new endeavor. We are kind of, as we said earlier, building the plane as we go, learning how to do this. Habitat, our Aging in Place coordinator officially came on our team in the middle of July. The Office for Older Adults had four requests ready for us, and as we meet today, we've received 10 requests. These requests have included leaky faucets, a lot of leaky faucets here in the county, drywall repair, gutter repairs, installing many grab bars, repairing hand railings, light fixtures, mailbox installation was a new one that just came in, and more. Five of these repairs already have been completed as of today, and our Aging in Place coordinator is out on a site today, working on number six. And all of these projects have been done at zero cost to the homeowners, and that's our plan to keep it that way, so they can, as Laura said, to continue to age and stay in their home safely here in Medina County. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Tom.
That's great. Thank you. I just want to put a plug in, like I did earlier, for our Human Services Levy.
Yes.
That helps provide the funding, and I just want to congratulate you on the collaboration, continued collaboration with Habitat, especially in this program, but also the Salvation Army. I mean, but this is showing you the leverage we're able to use with the levy dollars, and how important the renewal will be to continue these kind of collaborations.
Very true.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Laura.
Next up, we have Erin Rogirio from OSU Extension.
So first of all, we want to say thank you to those of you that were able to attend our open house last month. We were very excited to show off our new space and how we're already utilizing it. For the Family and Consumer Sciences Program, we've had a very busy spring. We did our six Real Money Real Worlds, which is our financial literacy program for eighth graders. We partnered with six Medina County schools, and we also had help from the Ohio Treasurer's Office. They like to send some volunteers, they coordinate that with us. Fall will include doing Money 101 with Operation Homes, WITS Workout, which is a brain health program for older adults with Suprema Center, and Peacefully Parenting Program. For community development, Kyle was awarded a grant that will provide an opportunity for research and teaching on alternative energy. She continues her workforce development at Cups Cafe. She's scheduling her programs for fall with them now, and she intends to use her certification she just recently got for Mike Rowe Works with the youth at Cups Cafe. And then also, a draft of the economic impact of the Medina County Fair is being shared with the senior fair board and is awaiting feedback and comments. For 4H, Sierra reported that Medina County Fair was a success. I know if you were there, you definitely saw her, she was there open to close, I think. All the 4H youth did very well on their projects. To finish out, this year, they still have seven more car teens classes, they have a 4H alumni picnic, volunteer banquet, and Sierra will be taking Ohio youth to Puerto Rico on a cultural immersion trip, along with some of her 43 community clubs still meeting and celebrating the 2023 youth accomplishments. Now that they're rounding out the year, they're moving into program planning for next year, so camp counselors in camps, 4H projects, already thinking about fair for next year, club management, volunteer training, and school programming. For Ashley with ANR Agriculture, they've been very busy. This summer, the Master Gardeners and their ANR program had a booth and three raised bed gardens at the fair, and they were educating about vegetables, pollinator plants, and garden bed plants. They received new applicants to the Master Gardener Program from their presence at the fair, so they were excited about that. And their new Master Gardener Training Class is underway with 15 new volunteers learning about soil, insects, gardening, and plant diagnostics. Just this weekend, they taught about beneficial insects of Ohio at Medina County Park's Native Plant Festival. She continues to be on the lookout for two new invasive species, spotted lanternfly and box tree moth. You can learn more from Ashley by contacting your office, our office, if you think you find it. You can contact her by email or call our office line. And finally, across all of our programs, we're gearing up for Ag Day 2023, it's September 29th. We're going to be hosting seventh graders from Wadsworth Middle School to the Medina County Fairgrounds to teach them about careers in agriculture.
That's great. I just want to add, having been at your open house, which was, it's great to see that space getting used, I think as you went around the room and everybody introduced themselves, by my count, it was over 5,000 impact points in the county of different people that are being touched by the programs that go on in our extension office, so it's not something that's always top of mind, but, you know, probably every, you know, handful of people in the county are impacted by it, even if they don't realize it. So I think it's great work to be done, and there are great opportunities for people to get more involved, either through 4H or otherwise, at both the youth level and adult level, so.
Are we looking forward to seeing what else you're going to do with the facility, the backyard, gardens?
Oh, yeah.
Lots of potential there.
Yeah, they're working on the plans for that, and we are really excited, I know we've mentioned before, but just even having that sign where people can see it from the street, so we're not, just being more visible is helpful for us, too, so.
And if somebody said they were pleased to have parking there.
Oh, yes, that's a big plus. We will never take that for granted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a couple of commissioners resolutions. First of all, we have a resolution approving the appointment of a member to the Local Emergency Planning Committee for Medina County, and we are trying to look for the name here, Ron Foto?
No, he's leaving.
He's leaving.
Wade Balzer.
Wade Balzer. We are appointing Wade Balzer to replace Mr. Foto.
Move, do approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Next, we are reappointing members to the Medina County Revolving Loan Fund Committee. Ralph Berry is a legal representative, Debbie Kylie is the low and moderate income segment representative, Keith Hughes is the finance accounting representative, Scott A. Miller is a local bank representative, Chris Jacob is the Board of County Commissioners representative, Brett Thomas is county administration representative, and Dino Schuley is the private business representative.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Next up, we have a commendation, commending Lisa Earl for her years of service with Medina County Job and Family Services. It has come to our attention that Lisa Earl is retiring from Medina County Job and Family Services on January 2nd, 2024. Lisa has been employed with Medina County for 32 years. The Board of County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Lisa for her commitment and diligent work in Medina County and for her ongoing dedication to providing exceptional customer service to Medina County residents since March 19th of 1991. Lisa has served in the following capacities: account clerk 2, income maintenance worker 3, business service officer, account clerk supervisor, fiscal officer, clerical supervisor, fiscal supervisor, client support services supervisor, and eligibility supervisor. Lisa is a 2017 graduate of Medina County Leadership Program, participating in feeding Medina County for several years, assisted in preparing taxes for Medina County citizens through the benefit bank. She was also a member of the Medina County Home Advisory Council and vice president of the Medina County Housing Network. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, that Lisa Earl be and is hereby commended for her years of service with Medina County Job and Family Services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Congratulations on your retirement, Lisa. Okay, so we have no more commissioners' resolutions, but now we are here for public comment. Anybody have any public comments? Okay, next up, we have discussion session, and I see that you have something on the books, Annie. Are you going to lead this discussion?
Is anybody here? [laughing]. So I thought it was a good time to bring the folks into, at least bring the commissioners up to speed. We have a project here in the county that's been in the works for a long time, and, but it's going to be one that is, is pretty important, so I would invite whoever from ODNR wants to come up and maybe give the outline of the project, and then folks from our office will be here to answer any questions or help or supply whatever information we need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't bring enough for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm John Navarro with the ODNR Division of Wildlife, and we're here kind of just to give you a heads up about a project we're working on, on aquatic invasive species. Specifically, this project is to keep big-headed silver carp out of Lake Erie, and just not Lake Erie, they're all interconnected, so what we do in Ohio protects all the Great Lake Erie, they're all interconnected, so what we do in Ohio protects all the Great Lakes states. Is anybody not familiar with the invasive carp? Has anybody Googled jumping fish and seen the?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They're bad. They're bad for the ecology, and actually, that's a human safety problem with people getting whacked by 20-pound fish. So, a real problem. We don't want it in Lake Erie. We don't want it in the Great Lakes. We have been working really hard. We got plans on dealing with invasive carp. And the funding for the project I'm going to talk about is through the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, and that's federal funding for invasive species in the Great Lakes. So, so everybody knows about the Chicago River Waterway, I hope. It's where the electric barrier is, trying to keep big-headed silver carp out of Lake Michigan through the Chicago River Waterway, which is a direct line from the Mississippi River watershed to the Great Lakes watershed. So a lot of work being done there, and actually, they're moving forward with closing that connection using what we call a bundle of deterrents, just making it so annoying for the fish that they won't want to pass through the locks and into Lake Michigan. Well, there's other connections along that watershed boundary, 18 to be exact, and four of them are in Ohio. There was one high-risk connection in Fort Wayne, Indiana, called Eagle Marsh. That one was closed by the Indiana DNR a few years ago. For the four connections in Ohio, two of them are medium-risk connections. The first one is Ohio Erie Canal up in Akron. We work with a corps that is now closed to the movement of invasive carp and other invasives. The other medium-risk connection we have that I'll talk about is Little Kilbuck Creek, which is in Medina County, and that's what I'll talk about. We do have two lower-risk connections that we've looked at, and we're just kind of going to just keep an eye on those for now. We're really focused on the Little Kilbuck Creek Connection, which is south of Lodi. It's a low-lying connection, low-lying area that floods periodically, actually annually in some sections. And the idea is to prevent invasive carp from getting into Lake Erie by constructing a berm and then further phases, looking at working on current berms that are there. So where we are now is, the partners for this project are Medina County Park District. They own the property. We have us, ODNR, and then the funders, and then later phases will include Hall &amp; Associates. He's a pretty big farmer. I'm sure some of you may know him. Really good sweet corn, by the way. So what we're looking at is a four-mile berm that's either going to be maintained or new construction. What we're talking about on Medina County Park District property is a new build. We're phasing this project in six phases because it's pretty big and expensive, so we need to phase it based on available funding. 90% designs are completed through HDR, and Dave Moore's going to come up and talk in a second about some of the stuff we're doing. And right now, we have $3 million for Phase 1. So if you see that map there that has the color coding, HDR did a really good job on looking at risk of fish moving across this waterway, with the red being the highest risk, and that is to the left of the picture. That's Medina County Park District property. So there's nothing there. What we're looking at is building a rock berm that will prevent fish from moving, but will allow water to move back and forth. We've worked with county engineers, and flooding is an issue here, and that's one thing we don't want to do, is exasperate that problem. And we're actually looking to mitigate and make the situation better. So Phase 1 will be that red section, and then later phases we'll work on as funding becomes available. So in summary, we've closed the one medium-risk connection at Ohio Erie Canal. We're working on Little Kilbuck, which will be phased, and then we're just going to keep an eye on those lower-risk connections. So with that, we're looking at starting construction hopefully in March of 2024, so next year. And with that, I think I'll let Dave come up and kind of talk about specifics. Like I said, we, this is kind of a courtesy to get this on your radar. We will have an open house in the future where the public can weigh in on this, and, but right now, we just want you to be aware. And so Dave Moore with HDR is going to talk about some of the mitigation we're doing.
Thanks for, thanks for having us today. This, this is a larger version of the exhibit that's in the handout.
Right.
But you can see, you know, the main, this is Phase 1, and the main aspects of this, like, like John had mentioned, you know, we're concerned with the flooding and maintaining drainage patterns across the existing berm through the drainage ditches or roadway ditches. Understand that sensitivity. So this is Phase 1. This is Franchester Road on the right-hand side, so the Medina, Medina County Parks owns the area to the west. Our, our plans are to construct a stone berm that'll be permeable, but the fish can't get through, so water can still pass through to some extent, recognizing that it's not the same as the wet one that's there now. We have some planned openings with fences that were used at Eagle Marsh in Indiana to effect, to keep the fish out, but to let the water more freely go through, as well as a compensatory storage area here that'll provide some additional flood storage. And what we'll see with this, for the preliminary modeling, we're doing some two-dimensional hydraulic modeling to understand where the water goes, because it's so flat out there, it's really difficult. It's not a typical stream environment, so we're using a 2D model to understand where the, where the drainage patterns are. And so, we get some benefit with this. We get a little bit of reduction in storage during the lower events. During like the 100-year FEMA-type event, we see no, no rise situation based on the mitigation factors. So you can, you can kind of see here that we're just, we're very cognizant and very aware of not causing impacts to anybody.
That compensatory area, is that, where is that, that, from where I'm looking at, that, that looks like that's going to be east of the, the stone area?
So the stone berm goes, yeah, so it's.
Well, it stays through that whole stretch.
Yeah, yeah. So the stone berm goes from the high ground over here
Uh huh.
to Franchester Road, and we have to raise Franchester Road a little less than a foot and a half.
Okay.
So, so the road will have to be raised a little bit, so the, so the exclusionary zone is the 100-year elevation plus one foot to keep the fish out.
Gotcha. For some reason, I was looking at that indicator that the berm wasn't the, the line. It was just in that one spot, and I thought it didn't, it didn't make sense why that was beyond it. But, so to the extent the water flow is affected in that whole stretch, then that overflow section would, okay.
Yeah, there's a stream here that comes through right now.
Yeah.
The stream number three, and what we're trying to do is we're putting a weir here, so when it, when it gets above the invert, it can go down this channel and go into this storage area.
Gotcha.
And provides an off-channel storage.
Is that a natural surface, or is that what?
Yeah, it'll be, it's going to be graded, and it's going to be graded such as it's not going to attract fishermen. It'll revert to wetland.
Okay.
Eventually, it's going to be very shrubby, very brushy. You may not even see it. And I think some of the plans are to allow parking here for the parks and allow folks to walk across the berm and birdwatch, because there's quite a few species of interest there. It'll be an attractant for the public, I think, eventually.
Yeah. So what part of the project impacts Hall growers, then?
So right now, in Phase 1, nothing.
Okay.
Right now, nothing impacts them. It's all in the, in the right-of-way of the road into the west Medina County Parks.
That'll be later phases.
And what would that entail, then?
So the Hall, Halls already have an earthen berm.
Right.
So it would be maintaining that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Or even re, building it up, or just?
No, I think we're looking at elevating it.
Oh, okay.
And if we have to, if we have to provide protection above what he has now, it would be through fencing that allows water to go through.
Okay.
Yeah, we just don't want to make any of the issues worse.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, and, and some of the berm work will be stabilizing it because it's unstable right now. You could probably see after flooding events, they're out there rebuilding it.
Yep.
So we're going to try to stabilize it, but not raise it. Like, like John said, we're very, maintain the existing drainage patterns, but keep the fish out.
Got it.
It's, it's unique for, for me. I do a lot of flood risk work, and it's usually trying to keep water out.
Yeah.
But this case, it's just the fish.
Yeah. So there's a, and there's a existing path there? That's the walking area that you're talking about, or would that be on the actual constructed area that the walk?
It'll be, so this area, this little gray box is kind of the construction laydown?
Uh huh.
When they're done, we'll work with the county parks. There'll probably be a gravel parking lot.
Yep.
And then there'll be a walkway out to the berm itself.
To, on the berm.
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to, it's a type-D riprap, which is about this big around, and then we're going to put some 57 gravel, like you see in a typical driveway across the top, so, so people can walk without twisting an ankle.
Got it. Interesting. John, you mentioned about the funding that's lined up. The source of that funding is?
So it's called the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative. It's like a 400-plus million dollars, but they have different pots that goes, that goes into, one of them being invasive species. So it's federal funding, and what's great for our organization, it's 100% reimbursable. We don't have to provide match, which is sometimes is difficult for us. So it's just, it's a great program, and we're taking advantage of it.
Just so the boards are aware, our, Dave submitted a fairly comprehensive model. Dan and Dave from my office are working with them to get things kind of expedited and approved so they can meet their early first quarter, second quarter construction. So we're working together on that.
All right, great. Good. Thanks for the update.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you guys have an idea when you're hoping to have the open house?
To be determined. I don't know, Dave, what do we?
This year?
Oh, this year.
Okay, so.
October.
Oh, okay, got it. All right.
Yeah.
Cool.
But the thought was, at least bring the, the board up to speed of what the project is, so if you see something coming here, you're kind of aware of it.
You're more likely to be down in the Lodi or Harrisville area?
Or maybe then.
Oh, okay.
If we're here. Oh yeah, we might do it at Medina County Park District. Their location on Tripoli. They have a physical.
Oh, Crayle.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
On the west end, I think.
Yeah, Crayle Shelter, I think it is.
Yeah.
Yep. That'd be a good place. Yeah. Super.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, Chris, do you have anything?
Yeah. It's, firstly, good news, the final work is being done at the 1841 Courthouse to allow for the move of our Domestic Relations Court over to the 1841 Building. There will be some final work done in the attic this week. We've got a final inspection scheduled for September 11th and start the move in on or about September 12th. So that should be, I think, about a two-day process, so I just wanted to update you with that information. Secondly, we have an emergency management project, building project, meeting with the architect this afternoon at 3 o'clock to review the rebid documents for that building project. So I'll update you thereafter and let you know how things look. And thirdly, and finally, Metro Housing lease. I believe that the Metro Housing Board is poised to adopt and approve the lease at its meeting later this month. I'll also be presenting that to you for your review and action by resolution within the next one or two weeks.
And what are we going to do, our end on the courthouse lease?
We are going to wait until the city's 30-day period expires, at which point they will sign it, and the mayor said he would drop that off to my office, at which point we'll have the resolution on for you to finally approve.
So, why are we waiting the 30 days?
Because they've not officially executed the agreement.
Oh, okay.
Until after that 30-day wait period, after the third and final council reading, which was held September 28th.
Okay. Already?
So, that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you have anything more, Andy?
No.
I have two things.
Go for it.
Okay. First, NOAACA, we have NOAACA Board meeting this Friday. There has been, there have been, two of the three Medina County sessions have been held locally for feedback on the Climate Action Plan. I've been working on a memo, which I did share a draft, I think, with the group here, related to some questions and concerns over the, the greenhouse gas inventory, which was kind of the foundational document of that. So I'd like your input on it, but my thought is that we get that, or that I get that finalized to circulate to Grace Galucci for NOAACA staff purposes, and then also to the Board of NOAACA. And just to kind of further that dialogue that I think needs to happen at the board level related to, you know, the greenhouse gas inventory and its impact on the Climate Action Plan that is to come. I think there probably are some other additional steps that may be worthwhile. I'd be interested in any input the two of you have on that, but as a preliminary matter, I, I think that's the most productive way to, to raise the issues at the board level, which I think is the, is the next step, or the immediate next step, maybe not the only next step. So that's my plan, but I wanted to get your input, and then any other additions or feedback you have as far as moving forward.
Any additional updates on potentially leaving the organization?
No, there is no, there's nothing imminent, as far as that's concerned.
Well, we have received communication back from LSC and through, I think, Senator Romanchuk's and Representative Rais.
Yes.
Office regarding just the general outline of it and.
And there could be, there could be some things working in the, in, when the, when the General Assembly reconvenes in terms of giving some additional options, because there is, there is an, an opportunity as it relates to some of the water quality
Water quality.
Work that's, that's been done and how those assignments to NPOs work out. So, but to say anything is imminent there is, it'd be premature. And so I think our best, most likely course of action is to kind of play the hand that we've been dealt, as it relates to climate action. And then also, you know, there are some, there have been some discussions, even at the most recent Climate Action Plan Session, related to the Brunswick Interchange. And in my kind of offline discussions with, with the folks at NOAACA, related to the Brunswick Interchange, they've, they've told me in no uncertain terms, this is staff people at NOAACA, that that proposed interchange does not comply with the interchange policy. So I'll be monitoring that closely, and also, I think, trying to advance some, some formal action on the NOAACA Board front to, to reiterate and confirm that reality, that if it's not in compliance with the interchange policy, then I would, I would think NOAACA could take action to oppose it on those grounds. So.
I'd agree with you formalizing that. I think that's your intent with the, on Friday.
Right.
Bringing it up for the Board to process, and indeed, I mean, that is what Grace Galucci communicated, as well as others, to legislature and to the governor, and I think the Board itself ought to weigh in.
Right.
And confirm that that is contrary to the, to the policy and the process that the, we have in place for transportation planning and that project. And I think they ought to make it clear.
Right. And even, even if, even if no action is taken, my understanding in terms of the approvals that are necessary from the NPO's involvement on an interstate project like that, those approvals don't get bypassed by virtue of the state law that's on the books.
Right.
So there are still additional, I would say, steps that NOAACA would have to go through to approve the project, even if nothing else changed in the meantime.
Right.
But, but my thought is, why would we go through those steps if everybody acknowledges that it's not compliant with the interchange policy? That, that should be a quick way to just strike it off the agenda altogether. So that's really where, where my thoughts are on this issue.
And with regard to the hand that Medina County has been dealt, it's a 2-7 offsuit, but.
Yeah.
Did you just get that?
Yes.
Okay. It's.
That's, that's a folding hand, though. We're, we're not folding.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did you have?
Yes, I actually, we did receive a correspondence from Wadsworth, the Suprema Senior Center, asking, there is a healthy aging grant, Aging in Place Grant, that we know that the state budget process has given to county commissioners for distribution. The Ohio Office on Aging has not come out with the. The Ohio Office on Aging has not come out with the, with the requirements for the grant quite yet. We know what the intent was, legislative intent, as well as administrative intent, but they have to put it in rules as to what the, what the money's qualified to do. They've asked for, I guess, for permanent improvements within their facility. At this point, just to let you know, communicated, I've talked to Laura, communicate to them that, thank you very much, we'll just wait until the rules come in to find out whether it's eligible project or not for further consideration.
Okay.
So at this point, we'll see what the state, we know we have the advisory group, as well as Laura Toth and myself, and Chris have been throwing around some ideas as to how that 270,000-plus would be used for helping people aging in place and providing services, and we'll be discussing that in the next couple months once the rules come out.
Great.
Okay. Just wanted to let you know, we'll, let them know that we'll take that into consideration, and once we have the rules, then we'll be able to figure out how to process. That was it.
You look like you were dying to say something, but.
I just had a question. I thought we were emptying the county administration building to sell it, and then I know we've entered into a lease. Are we still going to potentially sell it?
You say.
You mean a professional building? Yeah, sorry, okay. That's all right.
Because at one time, I had a buyer, cash, that nobody was willing to make a deal, you know, we were taking it subject to people being there.
The intent.
That buyer is long gone, but I'm just wondering, is there any intention?
Yeah, there's still the intent. Metropolitan Housing Authority needed a temporary location for their plan, so we are entering into an agreement for them to use the professional building for.
Up to three years?
30 months.
It's up, up to 30 months, right? It's a 24-month lease. Yeah, 24-month lease with a six-month extension.
Really, it's a matter of timing, finding a permanent location for their administrative offices, as well as walk-in services, so that they can move quickly out of their current administrative offices and utilize the state grants, as well as the county commissioners' money aside for the temporary emergency, the housing shelter. And so this is a temporary place for them, and the quicker they can find a permanent place, the better, in which case we'll, but at the outside, it wouldn't be that period of time. I think the, the long-term intent is to probably to put it on the market.
Yes.
Well, and I think, I think you were at last week's meeting, I think that's kind of the essence of the discussion over the term there. Nobody's trying to deal, back to the hands analogy, but nobody's trying to push Metro Housing out or rush them through a decision, but it just seemed like we also didn't want to have that facility tied up too long where other opportunities, you know, might not present, if another opportunity presented itself where that would prevent us from pursuing it. So 24-month lease with a six-month extension seems to do that.
Anything else? I will entertain a motion.
Okay, move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweater?